All right. At this time, we will begin the Adrian City Commission Work Study Session for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts, present. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Catherine Berry, present. Commissioner Gouse.
Present.
All commission members present. At this time, I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first presentation tonight, an item for discussion, which is a presentation for the developers who have tied up the Bixby Hospital site. And I have a handout from them that I'm going to pass around, but I'll introduce them to you. And he can go ahead and take from there. It's Michael Collier over here. He will explain who he is and what they've got going as I'm passing out their handout. The goes for discussion.
Thanks, Greg. And thank you all for coming to see me. My name is Michael Collier. My company is Pivot Development. And myself and my business partner Scott Gibson could be here tonight. He's in another city housing meeting in Ohio, exact same time. We have, as Greg mentioned, secured contract to redevelop the Bixby Hospital. I understand it's not a long time coming and something that was very desired in community to see that hospital be excite repurposed. So we've been working on this for about a year and a half prior to getting to its point. And beginning with our demolition of the building, which is scheduled for essentially later this fall. And the redevelopment of the site, the front seven acres, as it's currently proposed, into a, you know, for rent, community rental housing, missing middle is target eighty to one hundred percent AMI. And right now, we're looking to repurpose the site for homes on average around nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet, depending on the number of bedrooms, bathrooms, and formatting the many. And, you know, a high density use, it's fifty-three homes right now, so we have slated for the site. And we're looking to do something a little unique. It will not have a typical neighborhood deal. It will have more of a community deal with single hubs, houses centered around community hubs. We will have amenities. What we put in our request is some information about redevelopment plans, but also a financial assistance request. We're looking to achieve some state grants for the missing middle housing, which is in state budget. We've been successful at obtaining these grants and other projects and have one just beginning now that we started two years ago in suburb of Detroit. And in this case, we're looking to, I guess, hedge off the waiting period that it takes in order to achieve that grant, get funding and get started. And with the city and the county's assistance, if we're able to get funding for predevelopment alone now, we're able to shave about a year and a half to two years off that waiting period timeframe. So that is our goal. We like to be able to make an impact as soon as possible. We have negotiated with Chromatica to assist in the demolition cost. But the entire redevelopment of the site and the new construction and, you know, from demolition to finished product is completely on us. And we're looking for some help to make that project available.
Can you explain kind of how your deal with Chromatica is working, when you become the owner, all that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a unique contract. It's not complicated because you need. What we had to do, they want to ensure that the hospital is demolished and that they've met their obligation to the community prior to letting us officially own it. And we are, and I say we, Pivot Development, my partner and I, Scott Gibson, are in charge of the demolition project. So what we structured was essentially a lease that as soon as the hospital is demolished, immediately transfers into purchase agreement and the sale occurs. And all the steps are laid out in mutually executed contract already. So nothing else has to happen other than the hospital has to be torn down. And that was their priority and that's what they wanted to make sure happened. So we structured the agreement so that those steps line up with, as soon as the hospital is demolished, they verify it and we become the owner of the site. We have been contributing dollars towards demolition. Chromatica is funding the majority of the demolition cost, but we had to invest with them to show some commitment on our side with that project.
Do you have any idea what the timing of that, of the demolition would look like?
Yeah, so right now, what we're proposing and what we're scheduled for is a July fifteenth start. It'll be a few weeks of crews being in there just cleaning out the building prior to any actual, like, you know, visible demolition to occur. Demolition can take about twelve weeks. And so, you know, start to finish, you know, beginning in July into around October, hedging off a couple of weeks of any potential delays we may have. We look to, you know, cancel and vacate all the utilities in June. We'll put up a perimeter fence, seven acres, as soon as the utilities get cut. And then we'll work all the way until, you know, everything's demolished, hauled off. And our demolition contract includes even seating for new grass. So at the end of the demolition, there'll be a seven acre field essentially out there. Right now, we're working with preliminary concepts with the architects and engineers to preserve the existing hospital curb cuts and entrances that we can reuse for our development. But other than those main, interesting, yes, everything else is.
Are you, are you talking both the hospital and the cancer center?
The, is it cancer center or the office building behind?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think early discussions from Chromatica with the city and the county included that building and the acres behind it. But that is no longer the case and that's not included in our contract. They want to maintain that building and intend on using it for a number of years. So the, the seven acre site I'm referring to is essentially what the main hospital sits on. And there will be a parcel split that Chromatica's legal team is working on. If they haven't presented already, that creates a new property line between the hospital and that cancer center.
Yeah, that was the thing I was going to have to clarify. So any of the other commissioners, this is obviously the first time you're hearing this, first time you're seeing a written proposal. So we expect just some discussion tonight. Likewise, not the very first time Burke's here yet, but he hasn't had a chance to really dig into this yet either. And so we'll have to do some work in the background as it relates to be asked. But I want to give the commissioners feedback on what you've heard so far and, you know, whether you're open to this idea, so maybe we can find a way to structure it and so on.
Will the demo, will all of the building removed from site or will it be ground and processed on the site?
So, you know, let's say ninety-eight percent of it will be removed offsite. There's a lot of center block and a lot of concrete that have kept on site pathways for foundations for the homes and for, you know, longways and potentially streets depending on what gets torn up during demolition as far as existing drives. But almost everything will be halted.
Well, the other building require an entrance from that same street while demolition really?
Yeah, so what we're talking demolition company about is actually creating temporary demo entrance so they don't tear up the curbs and the entrances that we're trying to personally maintain. And they'll use that temporarily to address the rest to access the site.
Are you looking for any Nishtha grants as well?
It's possible that the money we seek grants for passes through Nishtha, but we're not going to apply Nishtha directly because that restrictions. And also income benefits that we don't necessarily want to be subject to. That's why we're angling for missing middle. We're not, we're not doing a low income housing development. We're not doing special elemental analysis programs. We're looking to be competitive and to offer kind of a lower end market for good products.
Do you have experience with this product elsewhere?
Yeah, this will be the sixth vacant abandoned building I've done in the fifty-second project that Scott and I got about three years. But a lot of creative adaptivities, private solid country and have a lot of experience. Unique redevelopments like this.
Does this particular kind of detached rental though, have we done this elsewhere?
We have, yeah. The, Scott has more of a single family residential housing background. And I believe mine is much more larger facilities, hotels and large apartment complexes. But we're actually emulating the design concepts around the neighborhood that was first built in Bend, Arkansas, the Walton family played for the Jimmy's and come up with a neighborhood called Black Apple. And one of us designed the words when it was first launched. And it has very, very similar looking feel to what we're wanting to do with this site. This is, that is a lot of huge, you know, traditional kind of cottage type homes, trees. And every central community center is surrounded by homes with front porches and walk ups. Parking is on the exterior. So you line up with like little neighborhoods and clusters. It's inside, it's inside. It's unique, but it's really neat. We can't take pride in the design. We're following along.
You call it a neighborhood community?
Yeah, it's called Black Apple. And that, you saw, they did, their first phase was eleven homes on Black Apple. And so it's a seven acre site.
Or a target for what a rental would be for you?
And we're going off of the, you know, Adrian data, which it was size home. It would be somewhere around the late, like, twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollar. It's not the most expensive brands in your market. So that the lowest, we are going to do brand new construction. So, you know, we struggle with having a pay for, or, or that's our targets.
You said we get one bedroom, two bedrooms?
Yeah, right now, I don't know that we have any one bedrooms at all to. For young families.
Well, I think this is very exciting and I'm really happy that you are looking at Adrian and hope that you get those grants. And so they ask, from what I heard, would be a loan from the city. And you're, and you're also going to be approaching the county. Is that correct or just the city?
Yeah, I'm not sure how your funding passes through, whether it goes from county to city. But we are seeking a predevelopment loan that would be secured by the site. What we proposed to pay on time is if a loan is ready to fund prior to the hospital being torn down, we would assign a mortgage or a title on that development script. And as soon as the hospital is torn down, we save the county. I would love that block structure. Once we get our construction and, or we don't get any grant.
Definitely need more housing, so.
I've heard.
Yes. And, and we are really part of abandoned buildings that are blighted. So you're hitting both of those. So thank you very much for considering Adrian and great concept.
If you don't know, Scott and Michael are involved in the redevelopment and going downtown. Other questions for Michael?
Very exciting. Thank you.
It is exciting.
Yeah.
Very nice.
We generally open to this idea, so maybe more about structure for it, be just fun balance? That would be my first thought, but obviously we got, we got to talk about reconstructive such a time. Using public dollars, is there any conversation kind of from the Nishtha end of things related to a desire for certain number of units to be eligible for a lower income control, not the whole process, but a portion of it? Well, and I, I mean, they can answer whether that's something they're open to. From my perspective, all units create greater access, right? Housing supply and demand, and if we can add fifty units to our market, that's going to open something else up elsewhere. You know, the rental rate that he's talking about really is pretty good in our market.
Exactly for two or three bedrooms. Yeah, you can't get a three bedroom home for that.
Well, except the one I have.
Except.
What's your estimate of how secure this loan can be? Well, the, the site without the hospital is a valuable piece of property. I think that we would have to praise it, but I would think it would be worth money at least. And we would have first possession as it's been proposed. So, but the only question is, you know, if we're in that space between the hospital is demolished. You know, if we, if we predate the, the point where the hospital is demolished, they do not have a property interest to convey to us. It would spring automatically at that point because the, their ownership springs automatically once the hospital is down, but there's a different risk scenario during that brief period of time where hospitals still stand. I don't think they will. They will convey the mortgage to Astral, but it won't give. It will take, it wouldn't take effective, but the proposal is, it's added to us until the hospital is demolished, the site becomes a, yeah, go ahead.
And if I may, just add to that because it is somewhat unique, like you said, it's a short window of time. We would also assign our contract as part of the loan so that the city and county would be in control of that absolute. We would have, we would have our agreement as collateral and then you would have the first.
And I assume you've done this kind of redevelopment loan. Did I hear you say that correctly?
Yeah.
So this isn't unusual.
It's not. It's very common, especially developers have a lot of. Sides of the belt. And we have architects, engineers, design work, studies, college reports, all the sides of the road.
I think this is, this is very much normal outside of low income housing. Nishtha grants typically go to low income housing. And when was the last large development in the city of Adrian of this size? Before I was born. So I think this is probably something that we haven't seen in my lifetime, but this is not uncommon in real estate development or developing, you know, a significant number of homes in that mid level.
Related to low income and your openness for a smaller number than what was controlled by Nishtha?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be open to it if there was a grant that was applicable for this project. I'm sure Nishtha would require some percentage rent cap or rent control to low income. Our experience, not just with Nishtha but in other states, is that tends to make a project more expensive and complicated and drawn on. And we're, we're trying to avoid that. But it is always a path that's there and we have a lot of experience with that. And enough experience to try to keep our plan being, our infancy. But we're not opposed to it. We're just trying to go about it.
And again, I, I went, the, the number from Nishtha, that sort of stuff, can you give us one? Can you give us two? You know, something like that. So at least we can say when it comes to the public dollar that's spent, that it's not only beating the missile, missing middle, but, you know, it is addressing some lower, lower end. Yeah, we haven't talked about.
Right. And obviously you guys can work through specifics if it's even doable.
And for everybody's benefit, what payback period were you envisioning?
What, what we have in the proposal is thirty-six months. We're open on that, but that's the timeframe that we're definitely comfortable with. We'd pay much sooner. We never like to go ask for a extension bond loan, so we're trying to, it's a thirty-six month statute.
The questions for Michael?
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will study and, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Next up, I will defer to our committee on boards and commissioners to have some information, a report on their meeting. I don't know who's speaking for this group.
I'll split a coin.
Remind us who you all are first, I guess. Gordon, were you in the group?
I was in the group.
Bob and Dylan?
Yes.
All right.
Three of us.
Okay, so one of the three of you have to talk.
So what we went through was again, looking at the openings that existed and working on the need to get those seats filled. And then what is the process that was being used? Thanks to Jay for what Main Street uses. The interview process was something that we wanted to move forward with. And then also addressing, I know Commissioner Roberts' concerns about who are the people that we're approving to make sure that we have a copy of their, that application. So we talked through this process and wanted to make sure that we would share that through. And there's kind of a two-faced approach here. The first would be a strong push moving forward with a March first to get all the applications to City Hall and then have a temporary subcommittee from, in some cases, from the previous terms and people that were on the commissions before. So construction, we would maybe have Kurt Valentine, if he was interested, be a part of the interview process to onboard the new people. And then if he was interested in himself, just as an example. And then we would move those forward with a temporary, the temporary subcommittee and get the interviews process between March first and March fifteenth. And then move those forward for approval in April at the, the commission meeting. Again, kind of looking at that aspect, that appointments will be staggered by year and looking at where that availability is. And the hope is that as we move forward in November of every year, each respective committee or board or commission will bring forward their nominees for the application. We would go through, again, an interview process that would take place by the chair of the committee or by an interview subcommittee from this commission. And then have one blanket approval. We would have others along the way, of course, but one big approval that would take place following the November recommendation and then a December vote. And then those people would take their spot on their commissioner board effective January first of that year.
The purpose of this is because we have many of our boards, everyone is down at the same time, which wipes out the entire board. So making sure that that's staggered and that we have a date, a specific date, as in the end of the year, whatever, a specific date in which those expire, then we are on it moving forward. We're not like, oh, what date was that? Not the date that they were appointed because we don't know. It's just done. And we have it scheduled on, on our website, the year they were appointed, originally not that term. So just kind of helping keep better track of when we have open seats because not every board comes to us or says, you know, we have open seats. So that would give them some autonomy to keep track of that, bring interested parties onboard, bring those interested parties to us, et cetera, as well.
So existing missions that like maybe somebody expires in like July or September or whatever?
It's going to take a while.
Just, are you moving them out to that November date or?
We would have to vote on that.
That's what I was asking. Okay.
Couple things to think about as you think about this challenge. We currently have one application through the Ethics Board, two applications for HRC and one expressing an interest in either Historic District Plan Commission, ZBA or DDA. That's the whole thing. We do have vacancy on HRC, but so not a lot to choose from right now. The other challenge that we have, which can be steep depending on the nature of the board is we have a charter provision that requires numbers and boards of commissioners to the city, right? Yeah. The universe of people that we can work from is limited to the, to our residents. We had a legal opinion some time back that indicated that that was not binding on our authorities. So wouldn't apply to the, the, the authority. Like for the construction ward appeals, which I found all the people, when there was none, when I came here. And, you know, they have to have construction expertise and finding three people who are residents who are willing to serve. But, you know, it was, it was a tough go finding them. And, you know, we really had to reach out to them and ask them, would you serve? We would never have competition for a position like that.
One, one of the other areas that we discussed that would need the entire commission conversation as well is the elected compensation commission. So that is a seven-year term. And I know I'm buying green bananas when I think about where I'm going to be in seven years. So, you know, is that something that, and there's seven individuals there. Is that something, you know, for another discussion about, would we reduce that down to five? Could we reduce that down to a three or a four-year term and work along that? I did, I did have a conversation with one of the previous individuals and we kind of talked amongst them in terms of reaching out to the five people from the seven that still live in the city. That's possibilities.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, some of these are a function of an ordinance that we have. What, like, I assume that group is. Others are not. The Historic District Commission is mandated by statute to be seven members. Very odd, given how small ours is and the task at hand is, but that's the case. And so we've never managed to, we've, for a while, we didn't have, you know, a reliable department because we were such a small percentage of the seven, but we're in a better place now. But we, we gotta look at each of those ordinances, like you say, are the things that can be changed to make that more natural patterns. Five, five, seven people.
Well, I think.
That can be an option.
Well, I think, so we, we obviously need to find more candidates across the board. Um, I think we have so few, or one of my opinions, we have so, so few is because we really haven't marketed the availability of these different commissions, so, and committees. So, um, that's gonna be part, have to be part of the process, is letting the public know that these positions exist and, and, you know, hopefully we get the word out, you know, quickly that we've got all these different boards and here's all the openings that we have, who's interested? And hopefully people will come forward with that information and want to at least explore the opportunity.
Yeah, the one applicant that we had actually referenced seeing, like, it was a newspaper article that came out after one of your discussions. Oh, yeah, well, I've been meaning to do this.
I saw it posted on social media, probably a month or so ago. I think we'll have to do, um, media push and I think, I mean, it will take an all hands on deck approach. Um, we have a lot of seats available, so we really need to, as a commission, um, go find people to fill these seats and get this, um, taken care of, so that moving forward, we don't get into this position again, um, with empty seats. So, um, and that was kind of, it is a quick turnaround, March first, March, you know, that is a very quick turnaround, so I'm hopeful that all of you will take a look at the open seats and, and go talk to people and ask people to, um, submit applications for those seats so that we can, um, do the best we can at filling those open seats.
I think it's with people finding out that this is open, also letting them know the restructuring, the positive stuff that's being done to, to make it a more organized approach to serving, I think would really be, uh, would, would enlighten them. They would be excited, I think.
So if you look at our proposed plan, we did talk about writing, you know, some of the boards have written their own bylaws. Um, some of them have not, but, um, writing, you know, a generic, generic bylaws to follow and then letting those commissions tweak them to what, you know, any specifics needed for them. Um, that each board will meet once a year, if there's any updates, you know, state federally, et cetera, that they get those updates regardless of the need, um, that they will meet once a year just to get that and some training done, um, because that we don't have either. And I think that's a little bit how we get into this cycle of, oops, we have an open commission, um, because nope, they're not meeting if there's no need.
And if there is a opportunity for presentation at the Community Academy, of, here are all the commissions trying to take place and.
Well, I think what we need first is to let people know what the commitment will be. What are the boards that are open or what, what are all the boards? And I know they're on our website, but some of ours don't meet very often. And which ones, you know, which ones may only meet once a year versus which ones meet? You know, HRC is going to meet four times a year for their. What is the commitment?
That's important.
So that is something that we should put together to be added to that on our website then, so.
I think it should, we could put that together and then we can ask Michelle to do a nice press release maybe of that.
That'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
Give them the parameters, give them the guidelines, give them what they're committing to, what they're.
Because I think people are afraid because they don't know.
That's right.
I don't know.
Well, I wouldn't want to make a decision not knowing what I was getting myself into.
Exactly.
So that'd be, that kind of comes down to bylaws, you can not be there in, in our charter as well, right?
And not the one.
So that, so do we, do we, do we get people in those seats now as they are and start tweaking that? Or do you want to keep those seats open and then set that stuff up and adjust it?
I'd say the need right now is to build a position. That's a ugly man thing we haven't gotten done.
So if we fill those seats through at least the end of this year and then we set up these, you know, generic bylaws and ask for feedback from those groups that are there so that at the end of this year, when we fill any potential openings, um, we have that generic, um, those generic bylaws in place and buy-in from those groups as well, those, those community members that have volunteered to do that.
Not, not everyone needs bylaws.
Right, I, I'm saying the generic.
Bylaws, only one gives up, uh, DDA has bylaws, many of them have bylaws, HTC has draft bylaws.
We, when we were saying bylaws, we were saying that each group would then find a way to elect a chair, because that will help when, when there's ownership from an individual, then they're going to be the one that also would help with, right, finding replacements and doing interviews and that sort of stuff. So it's not, um, the, the commission, um, to do all these interviews by itself.
Do you think we're rushing the timeline though? This, I mean, as, as Commissioner Castle already said, March fifteenth is not very long, not very far out. So I, I, you know, or do we just recognize that that's rush and focus on those commissions or committees that meet more frequently and get those filled and you go back and get the ones on the groups that haven't met in a year or two years, um, and catch up and have those catch up? I, I'm just asking, I'm just throwing it out there, because it, it just seems like trying to do everything before March fifteenth.
There's some, there, there's some that are on those boards that are now off, et cetera, that are still willing to be on them. I think there's quite a few, quite frankly.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it'll be as difficult as we think. You know, we pick up the phone and call the people we know on those boards and commissions and say, hey, you know, can you redo your application, it's online, or I can forward it to you? Um, I don't think it'll be as difficult as we think, um, because there's quite a few that I've talked to. You said you talked.
I've talked some to.
That are willing to, you know, go back on. And I know that we had committee members at quite a few of our meetings that, um, both the, and those boards and commissions, so I'm hopeful that they'll apply. Um, I know Aaron already tagged me, said he, you know, he's applied for the HRC, so people are interested. I think if we put the call out, I think people will step up.
Mm-hmm.
Are you thinking of press releases, did you mention a press release?
Yeah, putting it out on all the media outlets to try to get people to, um.
We may not fill all the positions we wish to fill, but we could get a large chunk of, of things started. Large group of, of people in positions, getting started. I think the, the boards that meet some frequency kind of our fault, right? Like, Plan Commission falls, only one too. Uh, I do it's fault. DDA is fault?
Yes, uh-huh.
We did have an idea that Doug Miller would stand at the four corners without signs.
That's impossible.
If you thought that would be a great idea, you might be able to sing and dance for it.
And I know the ethics.
Thank you so much.
Four of them wanted to renew.
Yeah, well, one of them was applied, but, but, um, that's a very odd one, right? The, that is a board that is created not by any worthless, right? Resolution that passed, the binding policy that creates that board with, you know, no parent. Power to the board. And then we, yeah, I, I don't want to start some other big project here, but we have two ethics policies, but since we're talking about it, that are not the same.
Yeah.
One predates the other. Uh, only one of them utilizes this board. Really, an appropriate project at some point would be to put those things together, yeah. You know, create an actual functional process that's important to you. So the board does something.
Because part of the discussion was also, so if we have it, we finally bring this ethics board up to speed and then they never meet and they never get trained, then, uh, that becomes its own problem. So getting them trained and then unfortunately, they're just gonna have to wait until.
Maybe we should put.
Well, unless you give them some other duty, that is all.
Fixing the policies for us.
Yeah, like, hey, put the, hey, review the three things that they want, how we're a policy.
That's a good place to start.
Yeah.
I guess my only question would be on the back view, how a city employee is a point person? Um, is, you know, is this going to be okay? It with our city employees, because I assume that means for some of them, coming to one more evening meeting? That might be out of their, obviously out of their regular duties.
Like we said, some of these don't meet. So most of the ones that have a city employee on, well, many of them meet regularly and those city employees are already attending all these meetings.
They're attending this.
Um, I think it's like that. The ones that we had, I, you know, those are really just meetings that never meet. We, we're asking for one meeting a year and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the evening. It could be lunch or whatever, but.
I, I don't have, I, I mean, I like the idea of a city employee being directly involved with all boards. I just want to make sure it's not against any of our, of our, um, HR things or, what do they call? Our contracts, things, our contracts, actually. Is this going to be, you know, something with any of our contracted employees? Is it gonna be a problem? I don't know.
Yeah, these would all be non-union, well, they're not all departmental, but, you know, planning and zoning administrator attends those free meetings already. Um, the degree of the fact they play, planning commission being called, CBA about having by, HTC, historic district commission, HTC. Only, uh, a few times all year. So that makes sense. We really need the brownfield development authority. We gotta get going on that part of our riverfront program. But again, those, that wants to be people with some expertise in real estate area. Tim, you want to be on it, so?
Sure.
Okay, there we got one. Community zoning director makes sense as a liaison for that.
So we shouldn't.
Yes, but participating in ethics board, board review is already run by the accessory, it's a board.
I think we were ideas we had, by no means were we demanding.
Oh, yeah, if you correctly perceive the, uh, the roles of each of those people as a lights board. Correct, the only one that would really be not always some of the compensation.
I mean, the, well, it's.
It might, you know, yeah, there'd be assistance to her, but again, that's like one time every, you know, they've never met during the time that I've worked for City Hall, go around five years.
Mm-hmm.
That's not very frequent, like. We were thinking at least they could pull conservative, uh, data or have experience doing that, right? But I can do that.
Alright, so it sounds like it's gonna be okay?
Yes.
Yes, that's the very.
I only have one comment really. When it comes to bylaws, um, I think you're probably better off coming up with the best practices list than try to recreate bylaws for every committee. Most committees have bylaws. Um, some of them are statutory, there's a name like statutes, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that. I don't think you want to just have a cookie cutter. I mean, if you had a best, best practices, if you're looking for how to elect a chair, how to do that, sure, you could, you can have a, here's what we suggest you do, you take a look at the bylaws as they are and, and suggest that commission change it, because there is their bylaws, not your bylaws. Just, that, that's my advice, that's practically like a list of best practices, implement that into your bylaws.
So in that, some, I mean, as in most of them that don't have bylaws, don't meet often? So do you think it would be, we should say that in joining this commission, then we're asking that they meet to create the bylaws for that commission?
Oh, absolutely, you can, you know, at any meeting, you could, you could present that best practices to each commission and say, this is what we suggest you come up with. And I can draft up something. In general, I've written bylaws for several committees, but what I'm saying is, I, I wouldn't force it on them. I would say, this is what we think needs to happen. And then you have, you know, different committees have different responsibilities, so don't, don't try to make it all the same. But at the same time, because there are things that, that need to happen. Make that, you know, at a minimum, I agree with Commissioner Benke that need to, elect a chair. You need to have a way to get started and, and somebody to run the meeting.
Right, you need to have an agenda, you need to have minutes, yeah. Okay, I, I would appreciate you coming up with the list for us to, to give to committees that don't have them. Looks good, guys.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you for the work, right? Yeah.
Let's wait for Doug, so.
Probably gotta find some colder weather for you to go out there.
Yeah. Probably by that San Luis, twenty-five, maybe, I don't know.
That means all.
Yeah? For the next style?
Uh, we, so we wanted to check in with you about the Community Academy, you know, that was very, most of, quite a success. Former participant here and our leader, um, so, uh, are we doing it again in twenty twenty-four or so? What are the target dates?
So I asked for this to be on the agenda again, because, yes, I did run it, but it's the City of Adrian's Academy, not mine. So I wanted to make sure that, um, the rest of the commissioners were okay with starting the planning for, um, the, the next installment of the Community Academy. Any questions, any thoughts?
I thought it was a great, Mary, and I.
I'm not, I'm looking for accolades.
Yeah, no, attending the graduation, it was clear that people learned a lot, enjoyed themselves. Um, I, I, I think it was, and I, I really hope that we do it again, because I have run across some people that said, I hope you do that again, because they didn't get to be in the first one and they were, they're interested. So I do think it's a great idea. I think that at the outcome, uh, that was the only, when I was able to attend, was the graduation and it was, it was clear people enjoyed themselves, learned a lot. Um, I think it will, it will be successful again.
The graduates have been spreading the word, they, they were so excited about it. I know that they've really created a buzz and there's many more wanting to do it. What, what are you looking for time line, the same timeline or?
I think so, um, fall seemed to work really well. I, I did receive a number of comments that said, um, maybe not Wednesday night, because things are happening on Wednesday and so we might try for Tuesday night. Um, I was saying we need to stay away from Monday, so, but a, but a Tuesday night might work. I mean, I suppose even a Thursday night, but right now I'm thinking of a Tuesday night again for ten weeks, um, based on the, the surveys back from them and discussions from some other department. And so I, I asked the department heads to connect with me and then I sent a survey out to everyone. So, um, you know, there are some tweaks that I, that, you know, obviously need to happen. But I think for the most part, it will run along the same vein, where each night will be one or maybe two departments. But the, the biggest, not complaint, but the biggest suggestion is they just, there, there's just not enough time. There's just not enough time. And so the only thing that I'm really thinking of possibly changing is making it two hours instead of, you know, because it's a little bit more time to have some good, um, discussions. So, but the department heads and the people that presented have, um, had really good feedback. I, I know, I believe that when I first presented it, many of them weren't so sure how it was going to go, um, but they were pleasantly surprised how well they felt after, you know, after the presentation.
I've heard nothing but positive comments about it. Um, I've talked to a number of the participants, I've talked to some of the department heads. Everybody thought it was great. So I think as, as we ask them at graduation that, that, uh, the participants get out and reach out to the community, tell their friends about it, um, hopefully you'll get a lot more interest this year. I mean, you had good interest this year. I think hopefully in the future, more and more people, I'd like to, I'd like to have more people apply than we've got room for and just start the waiting list, that would be great.
I, I, I think that, um, we had, we had eighteen and on any given night, fifteen showed up, I wouldn't say, um, which was, which was a good number, but definitely showed me that we could have more. Um, I, I capped it at twenty, but we only had eighteen apply. I, I do think that we could reasonably have, you know, a good twenty-five and then still be okay with, um, having a, a good group, not too big, to have some good discussions.
As we look at this, my one suggestion would be anything that we're doing and most specifically the water treatment plan.
As we look at this, my one suggestion would be anything that we're doing and most specifically the water treatment plan. To be the first one because we were walking around in the rain and in the dark. Um, by the time we got to the tour, so probably not the best, uh, in terms of schedule or when it became, um, or everything related to kind of best instructional practices. Then we all know sitting through a two-hour lecture isn't the best instructional practice. And our department heads are teachers. So are there opportunities to talk to them about, you know, talk and turn opportunity to break it into good sessions so people could have a conversation, get up and move around. Cause I think the experiences where we were up and moving and there was some transition compared to when we sat for ninety minutes of urge straight lecture, those were the ones that the conversation afterwards was stretch. Um, and then I think, um, if we are looking to expand it a little bit more, um, and especially to, to reach out into children. Um, there is the opportunity if we apply for sketchies. So that's the certification for when teachers and administrators renew their teaching certificates. Um, you need so many professional development hours and the ISD would sponsor that. And then we could have elementary teachers who are city residents attendees, not only for their own good, but then they could take that and teach that in their local government aspects of their class, uh, as well. So kind of double dipping for teaching, uh, city resident, but also then teaching their students about how city government works as well with it.
Um, well, in all of that and, um, as I said in the beginning, this isn't, I know this was my project in the beginning, but I will be asking for more assistance from the city commission because I did attend, um, almost all of them except for when I had to be home. Um, so just be looking for that ask that I'll ask you to participate and be the moderator for, and at least one of the evenings. And when, I mean, absolutely. You're always welcome to come to all of them, but just a commitment to be at, at least one of them.
Well, I think it's important too for the participants to know who all the commissioners are. So we're seeing a face and putting a face with a name. I think it's probably a good thing. The only thing I'd caution you about, Mary, is the Tuesday night, for ten weeks, you're going to run into other meetings on the city that are held. Yeah, you got the planning commission, you got the ZBA, there's.
That's when we can go to the fire department for.
Yeah, okay.
Water. So it's going to take some planning if I move it off Wednesdays. Um, but I, I think it can happen if that's what we're going to. And, and maybe we won't. Maybe we'll stick with Wednesdays and that's just what's gonna happen. For planning with the building, um.
Well, I know you're not looking for accolades, but I gotta tell you, this wouldn't have happened without your efforts and they're very much appreciated. I, I have something I've thought for a long time. I've seen other cities do it. I thought it would be a great idea for us to do it. Um, but I never had the ambition to do it myself and you did. So we really appreciate that, Mary.
Um, and then okay, that was that. Sorry, I have another comment.
Okay. Uh, so real quick before I also real quick talk about the strategic plan, they, uh, the listed item there's some questions on agenda regarding the Tressel Bridge improvement project. Just so you understand pricing in there. There were twenty twenty-three prices and twenty twenty-four prices because there was some chance of they're gonna do that work in twenty twenty-three, obviously. Twenty-two. Uh, so the twenty twenty-four prices are flying and that they were bidding alternately either a concrete product, which is a stamped concrete product that takes the place of timbers. And I think Jeremiah had talked to you about this at some point. He's got uh, Tressel Park, but or the timbers. So his recommendation of course, going with the stamped concrete product, which is a vastly different price, but be assured that he has made completely sure that they did the right specs and that they really mean what they said and that they're accurate and such. Just in case there are any questions about that since it was only content agenda, I just wanted to give you a heads up on those things. Uh, strategic plan, we don't.
And just, and just on the Tressel Park and the replacement of those things. I walk the trail a lot. And the deterioration of Tressel Park Bridge and the other bridge by Mami is constant. There, I, I mean, how many times have I sent you a picture on a Saturday morning that we gotta get this one fixed? It's constantly wearing down.
So this is, you know, I think the plan would be to transition to be using this product as we replace those boards, particularly because those are very difficult to find exactly that side where, what, what is that. Uh, just though we're consistent and always talking about our strategic plan every month, I don't, we only have like two minutes here, but I will give kudos. One of our goals is to enhance code enforcement. I'll give kudos to our new, uh, city attorney for agreeing to meet with code enforcement staff every week and we do that and, uh, become a huge benefit in terms of getting everybody on the same page. So we know where each case is at and also getting some innovative approaches, um, in our orders that we haven't had before. Uh, particularly as it relates to landlords who don't register their homes. Now we are taking the step of posting those. It's not habitable. When that happens for the, for the order that we get from the court with perps assistance and so excited about how that is, I guess, uh, talking about two days.
Comment about the new blog newsletter that has come out between you and I assume Michelle?
Yes.
Um, it's great. I mean, I know it's a start, but it's, it's wonderful. I think that getting that information out to, to the public is, is part of our strategic plan. So it's doing, it's doing its business so far. So if you don't already get the, the weekly newsletter, you can go to our website, right on the front page, it says subscribe here is the button. So just click that and then you will be on the list to get it every Friday.
The conversation that Gordon and I had at our community conversations meeting with constituents last Tuesday or Wednesday last week, um, the strategic plan was the first question that came up. Um, so Gordon was able to share a copy of that, which, uh, was helpful along with the comprehensive plan. Um, to say that we do have a direction and we are going in a direction. Um, but I think the, the concern is going to be related to some of those specific tasks of what has been accomplished. And we get kind of the, the quick update. Is there something on that that we can work to say this has been completed or this task has happened, um, so that when Gordon meets with that individual, um, on Thursday.
Anybody cared against? Sorry.
That's why I joined you.
Sorry, I was talking to someone else at that point and, um, and when we have the next update that we have kind of the running, so we can see it in writing and we don't need to run out of time.
Yeah, I think maybe for next month, we can have that as a checklist can be crossed. I don't know. We'll all go through it together and explain why that is still. You know, post it up there.
I do want to, I do want to share though that I, I, I prefer that the city be working than keeping digital score. So I, I think that we've done so much work on that. Um, I don't want to put more weight on the shoulders of Greg or Michelle or anybody else to make another document um, that takes up their time when they should be working on the strategic plan rather than creating another document. So I don't know. I, I, I mean, brainstorm a way that saves you some time and energy to work on that rather than report on that. If that makes sense. I mean, I know we have to report on it, but I, I, I don't want it to become, you know, two hour, two hour part of your week.
Right, right. I agree.
Yeah, it's gotten squeezed in our last two workshops, I would say. So we just got to actually leave enough time to actually go through it and and all those things.
But it is nice when we meet with those constituents to say, yep, not only do we have it, but here's the progress we've made on it instead of just here's what we think we're gonna do.
Nothing else, Mary? I'll turn back to you for public comment.
At this time, we will begin public comment and just to clarify that, um, we ask for your name and address and it doesn't matter where you live or who you are or what organization, please state your name and address because that is what we, um, do require for that public comment period. So um, just to reiterate that, I, you need to state your name and your address. And we will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. All right. Hearing no public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn?
No, 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 no. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will begin at seven.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
That was Commissioner Schwartz, wasn't it? Or, oh, it was Benke. Neither one of us knew down here. Sorry. You were quiet. We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R twenty-four dash zero zero one is from the Adrian Main Street DDA. It is a resolution to recommend approval of a new on-premises development district license for one zero one East Mami Street. May I get a motion to adopt the, uh, uh, motion? I'm, oh, my gosh, goodness. I'm telling you, the cold is affecting me. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments concerning this resolution?
J Mark's DDA director. Uh, this is for Main Street Tap Room and Kitchen located at one oh one East Mami Street. It is, uh, a joint venture between a, a current downtown business and another one in our community. So Josh Rothrow on Musgrove will be doing the managing the liquor license in the bar and, uh, to come see brewing, we'll be doing the food in the, in the kitchen. It will not affect any of our quota licenses. Uh, we don't have any available unfortunately at this time, but it will, this will not affect those quota licenses.
So the, just to be clear, because, and thanks for pointing that out, the, so the City of Adrian has a certain number of quota licenses. Those are filled and then because this is, um, a, a unique application, we now receive an additional, um, additional license as a result.
Yes, but it, it's a little more nuanced than that, but yes, it doesn't affect those quota licenses. Those are based on population. This is because it's in the downtown development district that we can issue another, an additional license with certain parameters. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? At this time, we will now begin public comment. Just to reiterate, you need to state your name and your full address. You can not, you cannot say just City of Adrian. If you live in the City of Adrian, we need it for accurate minutes. It is a policy of our committee that you do state your name and your address. So I just want to reiterate that and you will see the three-minute time limit. We will begin inside the city chambers first. We will then open it up for Zoom participants.
Hello, Joshua Frank, uh, downtown Adrian City resident, one forty-one, one half, South Main Street. Uh, I'd like to talk to you about an opportunity that the city has for, uh, helping out, uh, downtown businesses and residents when it comes to snow removal. So currently the city removes snow on the sidewalks in front of city property. And it wouldn't take much to have these crews and their equipment just clean the main drags of Mami and Main Street. Like they're already downtown. You would just have to allot for the man hours in the city budget. And with the current practice, um, like I have a picture here that'll show that's the four corners that have been cleaned. And then the, uh, snow removal equipment was driven down the snow to clean the other end of the sidewalk. But as a result of that, where those tracks are, that's all ice. And because the snow was not removed, people kept walking over it. So everything in between the tracks is ice. So effectively the whole sidewalk is ice. And you're not going to remove that with a shovel. But you figure for maybe an extra hour, ninety minutes of man time that the city would be able to do just the main, main drags of downtown and it would help everyone out and we would be breaking less snow shovels. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. And just to reiterate, you need your name and your address and you will see the time on the screen. Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments?
I'd just like to thank, especially this time of year, those people that worked over the holidays, but now are coming in and working overtime with the cold and the weather and the things that are going on. I do appreciate all the work that they're doing. We had a, a great, uh, there are a number of us, uh, commissioners and the mayor that had the opportunity to attend the MLK celebration, uh, last night. Uh, lots of, uh, um, powerful examples of people making change positively within our community. And I think part of, uh, our keynote, uh, address, uh, last night, uh, interesting from the Jackson lens was the effort to have the largest number of homes constructed in Jackson since World War Two. Um, and I think that, you know, if that's something we can follow up on and, uh, we got a good start with our information tonight. If we can, uh, continue to, uh, move forward on that. Um, one of, uh, the ways I try to get steps in on Monday nights is to park, uh, down by the brick wall or Chalmers and walk down. And, uh, I, uh, definitely concur that, uh, it was a, a treacherous walk, uh, tonight with lots of ice. And, um, if we can make a splotch to go down there and have equipment that's down there already. It's not only going to help, uh, the safety of, uh, city residents, but it's also going to help with, um, DDA and Main Street in general. I mean, it's, you can get into the businesses safely, get out of your car safely. Uh, it's something that's not happening, uh, in regards to that right now. I do want to, uh, also call out the conversations that are taking place, uh, with the, uh, the planning commission. Maybe, uh, Commissioner Gauss, uh, can talk a little bit more about this, but, uh, chickens are coming back, uh, for discussion. And, um, while, uh, that issue was, uh, in my head, I thought resolved and, uh, put to the coop, uh, with, uh, the commission, there's, uh, discussion related to, to that again. And I just think, uh, it's an important opportunity for people to come out and, uh, provide feedback. Uh, however, uh, one of the areas of concern I have is, uh, looking at the way that the zoning is, uh, being addressed. It would, uh, allow for SHU to move forward. Um, but Adrian College and LCS also fall in that same zoning, uh, capacity. So from an Adrian Public Schools student standpoint, um, if this were to move forward, um, public school students wouldn't be, uh, available to have a four H, uh, program, but private schools would. Um, and again, I think it still doesn't address the issue that we had with concerns related to bird flu, uh, predators, um, escaped chickens running, uh, through the town, those sort of things. Uh, so, um, just know that that's going to probably be coming to us after, after that meeting. So, uh, chicken homework is, uh, probably in, uh, the mix. The other thing I wanted to also address is, um, they do have, if you want to take one of those, pass it down. Uh, conversation as well related to, um, trailers and RVs, uh, associated with that. Uh, this is not the boating season or the RV season. So most people, uh, are probably not listening or, uh, uh, mindful of that. So one of the things I wanted to do, uh, the second page is what, uh, uh, some of the people that I know who are uh, campers, uh, boaters, sharing this information so that they're aware of, uh, the change, uh, when it comes. Uh, and the public hearing that's taking place on February sixth. But I, I had a great conversation today with Administrator Elliott in regards to, uh, to blight. And I did go over to that house afterwards, um, you know, on the far right. That's obviously the concern of something that we, I would hope as a commission would want to address, uh, in regards to blight. Uh, and then when we look at some other options that are out there, um, my trailer has sat on my property, um, next to my house for ten years. And, uh, I found out today that I'm in violation of the ordinance. Um, so, um, with no, no notice knock or anything like that in the, the ten years that it was there. Um, I think the, the question that, uh, Commissioner Gauss raised, uh, at the meeting was, you know, are these enforceable? Um, how do we stay on top of this? And this is another thing that's going to be coming to us. And when we think about the number of people in our neighborhoods that have well-maintained houses, um, that have a nice trailer. Um, it's presentable. It's not obtrusive. Um, Commissioner, uh, Administrator Elliott and I talked about what is blight? And what one person would see as blight, another person may not. And I think we need to move forward carefully on this and our minds open and problem solving approach. Uh, because if we do move forward with the ordinance, um, I would like, uh, any fellow investors with me to open an RV, uh, storage lot on one of, uh, the empty properties, uh, in the city. We could maybe make some money.
Um, matter of mayor, if I can have the, so just a couple of things. First of all, on chickens. Uh, yes, the students at Santa Heights have approached the planning commission, uh, and we've talked to them for the last couple of meetings. Uh, nothing has been decided. Um, and it's probably a very, very varied opinions of the planning commission, um, board uh, as to whether it'll move forward or not. Right? Time will tell. Um, but anything that's decided would come to the commission as a recommendation. It's not, planning commission is not going to make that decision. Make the decision as to whether to bring it or recommend it to the, the, um, to the full commission. Um, the, uh, we just discussed the RV trailers and boats for the first time at our last meeting. So again, nothing's been decided. Um, but, uh, yeah, we're going to, you know, we're going to be moving forward. And again, um, nobody's going to make a decision except this group right up here when it, when it's going to be finalized. So everybody up here is going to have a vote if, if they show us up here. So hope that clarifies.
All right. Well, everybody, please stay warm in this weather that we're having. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank